All right. Hey, everybody. How's? Here we go. Now it is. Hey, everybody. How's it going? Hope you're having a lovely day. Today I'm here live with city councilperson Parity. We're gonna be speaking about the Flock cameras and also Mackenzie Ryan, who is on the board of EFF Austin, to talk about what's going on. And yes, I have seen all your messages, literally as I set up my camera, saying that the mayor is extending the Flock contract. We have a lot to unpack. So thank you so much for taking the time. I know you're crazy busy and I appreciate you taking time out of your schedule.
Hey, you came to Denver, which is great. We're so excited you're here.
So yeah, can you just first, before we even get started, can you just tell me about your road to becoming a city councilperson? Because I know this is your first term.
Yeah. Yeah, it's my first term. I've been here about two years. Prior to that, I had a small law firm that did mostly workers' rights and civil rights kind of work. And I basically saw a lot more people falling into poverty, a lot more government systems that were going astray and thought I should run for office.
That's awesome. Now, when I was reading up on the news articles, your name was the only one that I saw came up when it was attached to the contract renewal and the difference between 500,000 and 498,000. So can you, so can you tell me what it was like to be the first person to speak out on that issue? What made you say like, this is, I don't like this?
Well, first, you have to explain like why they chose the number 498,500.
Okay, let's get into that first.
Well, that was a little bit after, that was after council voted down an extension of this contract. So we, you know, it was in front of us and we voted it down. In Denver, according to our city charter, any contracts that are worth half a million dollars or above have to come to city council. So half a million dollars is the threshold for a council vote. We had voted down a proposed two-year extension of these cameras that was $666,000, I think.
Unanimously, right?
Unanimously. And I can, I can talk a little more about that vote. But, but the, then we saw this extension come through and I actually got a copy of it from the city auditor that took the contract, the maximum contract level right up to 498,000 and change, which we've never had a reason to sort of litigate that charter prohibition and what it really means. So whether a court would say, ah, you're technically fine, or whether a court would say it's more the spirit of the thing, we don't know. But I'm certainly not happy about it. And I know other members of this body are not either.
I did see in the manual that there was an idea that trying to get around a particular limit by going right up to the limit is frowned upon. And that is 0.3%, if I'm doing my math right. Like, I can imagine that that is frowned upon.
Yeah.
The other number, I'm only mentioning this because like, you know, when you seize things, like I think Twitter was purchased for $420.69 a share. And it just, it keeps coming up. And it's not the most important matter. But the $666,000 contract, like, what is, I, I'm confused about that. Like, that's a strange number to pick. It's almost like somebody says Flock is evil. So like, we're just gonna make the number 666 for the contract.
I wish I thought that there was some bureaucrats sitting around the city government, like meddling with things in that way. That would actually make me really happy. But there was a $333,000 contract before that. So that one I'll take as a coincidence. The 498 and change, not so much.
Okay. Can you tell me what your journey was to wanting to vote no on that matter? For people who think, well, these are just license plate cameras that are supposed to help crime. Why do you care?
Yeah.
Because I didn't care about this a year and a half ago because I wasn't as informed. So I'm always curious what people's journey was like going from, I don't care or no, this is happening to, I'm voting no against this. I'm talking to the press and I'm stopping at every chance I get.
Right. And I appreciate you saying that because actually I also wasn't as alarmed as I, nowhere near as alarmed as I am now, but probably as alarmed as I should have been when I kind of got wind that we had these cameras in the city in the first place. Despite being a civil rights attorney by background, I have not been as attuned to privacy concerns in the past as I, again, probably should have been. In these particular cameras, the initial pilot contract that we signed, there wasn't any kind of networking. There weren't express mentions of AI. And so I remember having the impression like, I don't love surveillance tools, even sort of the old fashioned kind of surveillance tools. And it raised my hackles a little bit. But I kind of let it flow by because it was presented to us as an auto theft tool and is very much internal to Denver. And then-
You've noticed that they, the auto theft is a particular selling point for Flock across Sydney.
Yes. Because it's kind of, I think it's natural for people to think like, oh, how else are you gonna solve auto theft? You know what I mean? Now, one thing our police department has said over and over again, they love to tout that they've solved like 130 or some auto thefts with the help of Flock. That's less than 4% of all the auto thefts they have cleared. And the auto theft rate plummeted for a bunch of reasons that had nothing to do with surveillance.
Also, not to mention that a lot of it is post hoc and not preventative, right?
Right.
It's, it's a lot of these times they're recovering vehicles instead of preventing them from stolen in the first place.
Yeah. And that's, a lot of our crime narratives are that way, you know? Sadly, policing often can't prevent crime. What prevents crime often is social systems. And we underinvest in those, you know, and overinvest in the fancy tech, the robots.
We're not buying a Kia.
Yeah.
Buy a car with a working immobilizer.
Right.
I would be very curious to look at those stats, aside from this, just how many of those are cars that don't have a working immobilizer?
A lot.
I know in New York City, they, I forget if it was Hyundai and Kia or just Kia, but some companies would just stopped insuring them because it was so easy to steal them.
Oh, right. Yeah.
Yeah. We, I remember getting stats when I started that I'm sure really changed about how many of those vehicles were Hyundai's and Kia's. And it was a really large number. And then some number of like giant SUVs at the airport that were apparently of interest to cartels to use. So-
So Mike Siegel, he did a great job of explaining to a layperson like me what the relationship is like and why. And one of my main questions to him is, if something is this unpopular, then how does it continue to show up? And here, I mean, can you explain like the full of politics that we may not notice as people who are out of the city as to how something can have? Because I would understand if the mayor overruled the city council. I wouldn't say it's right, but if the people said, we want this, the city council ignored the people and then the mayor did it. But the people, I watched the entire one or two hours of testimony. There was, nobody wanted it. And nobody in the city council wanted it. So how, what does that look like? And what is the motivation to go ahead and do something that's that unpopular, particularly during a time when there's budgetary concerns?
I mean, in some ways, you'd have to ask the mayor that, I guess. Because I really don't get it. But I think that a lot of people in elected office are really terrified of being portrayed as soft on crime, you know? Because you'll see all this big money coming in against you if you get labeled in that way. I'm not worried about that. I want to talk honestly about crime and what causes it and what actually addresses it and what doesn't. And I am very unconcerned about, you know, what kind of dark money that brings my way. But maybe others are more sensitive to that. And then-
Speaking of dark money, I saw a couple people making a connection between Y Combinator, which is a venture capitalist that invested in Flock, who is funded by Michael Bloomberg and the mayor of Denver has also been receiving funds from Michael Bloomberg. I don't know if you know anything about that connection, but I saw a lot of people making that connection as to why he might be pushing for this Flock contract.
I saw it too. And I, I prefer not to think badly of people's motivations, but I do think that, and also I just keep my head out of that stuff, to be completely honest. Like, I like to be looking at the policies and just deciding what I think the city needs. But I do think that there's this like pressure on all of us in elected office that we just have this sense of, of kind of vulnerability if we, if we speak out in ways that are a little bit more accurate about this kind of like police tech complex that we've got going on. Even in, even in the Trump era where like everyone's afraid of what the federal government's doing, I think, right? And we should be.
Yeah, the fear on Palantir is very palpable for everybody.
Right.
Yeah, the idea of a system being put in place. It's, it's one thing if, I know the IRS collects certain data, I mean, social security collects certain data, Department of Labor, but a system that combines all of it and just finds everything and makes it like, brings it together.
Right. And I mean, not, not trying to be hyperbolic and not trying to be like a fear monger, but any kind of, if you look at governments in the past that decided to turn around and do like really horrifying levels of repression and violence, they didn't have these kind of tools. And so when you think about that, it's really frightening to me. And it's not, it's not hypothetical anymore, unfortunately. Like, I really wish we were still talking hypotheticals and we're just not.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of talk about sort of why privacy is fundamental to democracy. I watched this talk. I wish I remembered her name. But she's a professor in the UK and she talks about how in Germany, the reason that they were able to locate so many Jewish people is because they had registry databases. But in places like France, it was illegal to collect that sort of data. And so they were only able to capture, I think, about 15% of Jewish people living in France. And it sort of goes to like why it's so, even if the Flock were to be angels, right? They had the best intentions. Just placing all of this data in one location makes it very convenient-
Right.
-for a bad actor, whether that be Flock or some, someone external to the US or some, I mean, just someone, you know, in Denver who decides they want access to this information to, yeah, be able to access it.
A lot of businesses are doing this.
Very well said.
Sorry, I ended up to you, my bad. A lot of businesses are doing this thing with data engineering where they have all these different data and all these different silos. And it'll be easier to do customer service if they could just take the data from here and there and there, make it all accessible. And I understand why they're all doing that. It's just when government does it and they're also watching you all the time. It gets, it's weirder in a different way than if like AbbVie Pharmaceuticals is doing this.
Well, and I, it's sort of the conjunction of it too, because, you know, here you have this massive tech company that's actually the one that's holding all the data. And on paper, the individual local governments own it, but they retain the right to aggregate it and use it to train their AI. So what are we teaching that AI, especially if we're putting all the cameras in particular neighborhoods where more black and brown people live? We know AI loves to turn out racist because so many of our systems are racist. That's in our contract that they can aggregate our data and use it. They have all these-
I think that's an all Flock contract.
Yeah.
I don't know of any city that's been able to like negotiate that boilerplate Flock contract.
Right.
Which I'm noticing is because like, this is the case in Austin. I don't know if it's the case in Denver. But a lot of city council doesn't even have access to the contract, like until close to when they're actually voting on it.
That's usually the case here too, because we, it triggers like our time to vote. And so they hold it back from us until the last minute. But if we even vote on it, which again, the contract extension that was announced this morning, we're not voting on it because it's another no cost extension for four or five months. And I just want to say that, because I know you're referencing a lot of comments about this. The mayor sat me down late last afternoon with my colleague who has been really interested in this issue and who also was placed on a task force that the mayor created, which was ostensibly going to create some mass surveillance policy. Unbeknownst to that task force, which has been like meeting earnestly for several months, and it has the, you know, the DA's office and the lead public defender and the independent monitor and EFF and ACLU, everybody's there. It's like this amazing task force. We've been digging in. And the mayor, in the meantime, was talking just to the CEO of Flock and negotiating quote unquote, a different contract. And the different contract is basically just that they'll stop putting us on the state and national networks, which we could have asked for all along. I mean, that was, that was the original contract we had with them. They put us on those networks without telling us. DPD was unaware that our data was on the Flock national network.
So DPD, just a Denver Police Department?
Denver Police Department. Sorry about that. Yeah.
So they tell you after the fact?
They didn't know. So we were on there for well over a year and it wasn't until city council noticed this contract coming through. By the way, it was on our consent agenda. So we were supposed to vote on it without any debate. We pulled it off, my office did. And in the course of that whole thing, even after our vote, is when we finally learned that we had been on the national network.
So just so I understand the consequences then in case I missed it or somebody else missed it. But that means that, that the cameras that were in Denver were searchable and viewable by people outside of Denver?
Absolutely.
And then, was it not like this from the beginning and they never told you? Or was it not like that in the beginning, but they changed it in the middle of the contract without telling you?
Second one.
Okay. Yeah. So a big recurring theme on my channel are companies that change the terms of the sale after the sale. And they don't tell you that they changed the terms of the sale. Or they send you an email that goes to spam from some no reply email that has a bunch of graphics and stuff like that.
Right. And I have, maybe they sent an email like that to the police department. I have no idea. But DPD was in fact unaware that we were on the national network and the mayor's office was unaware that we were on the national network.
Because these are the sticking points when people say, why, why are you not okay with this? And like, I don't think they, they know all these little things that occur along the way. Because even if somebody thought these were a good idea, even if you're for having cameras everywhere for stopping crime, which I'm not for anyway, if somebody is, you know, wants to see police do other things to stop crime. I would not like to do business with a company that changes the terms of sale in the beginning of it, particularly when it comes to people's personal data and doesn't tell me. That's an out starter for me. It doesn't matter how good a relationship we had. I can't trust you at that point, even if you made this stuff free for me.
You took the words right out of my mouth. And honestly, the, it's not just, it's not just that either. This company has been dishonest repeatedly. The CEO came and did a little PR tour in Denver.
I mean, from the, from the actual get go, like they were using hacked data to develop their materials, like almost from the jump.
See, I don't think I knew that. So there you go. Like, it's always something new.
What you were saying about lying from the get go, I haven't followed all of them. I followed some from a different company called Live View, but I'd love to hear, just because I'm ignorant of a lot of this and I'm learning as I go. What were the lies from the beginning?
Well, in, in Denver, I mean, over the summer, Langley came here and he met with an assortment of council members and with, and talked to media and all these things. And so I had him, he was up back here in my office. We talked for 90 minutes. And he told me just multiple things that were just not true, right? So for example, the big one, which he ended up issuing this big like mea culpa statement about online, because he also said it to Nine News, our local media outlet here, is that he said there's no federal agencies that have accounts. And that was just not true.
Yeah. They, they made that promise across the US, we've noticed. Like directly to council members, that like, we will not give access to any federal agencies.
Yeah. So here's the mayor and he says, good news. I've been negotiating privately, just me and Garrett Langley, and we've come up with this much better system. You're gonna be so pleased about it. It's gonna be what we thought we had in the beginning. No, I'm not pleased about that. That is nowhere close to what we need.
I had a conversation without any of you present that you can't see the details of and everything's fixed now. I'm sure you'll be happy with it.
Also, let's give them an opportunity to lie twice. I'm not sure.
I mean, yeah, the company, I think that they are, like many of these new tech startups, this company grew really, really fast. And you can tell because it's this, it's this personalized kind of company, you know, it's his company. He started it. He physically built the first camera. He's super proud of it. He's a billionaire. And you can, I, in talking to him, had this really strong sense that compared to older companies in more regulated industries where the law has kept up with the tech, they do not have the kind of internal controls. He keeps sort of referring to like these off the cuff decisions that he himself would make that are again, supposed to make me feel better. So for example, he told me, this algorithm is trained by AI. And so it's not just that you can search for a plate number and it can recognize license plate font. You can also-
Which is kind of why ALPRs is a bit of a misnomer, right?
Totally.
They read way more than just license plate.
That's such a good point. Very well said.
And those features of the site, the first feature that I saw when I was looking it up was the fingerprinting feature where if the license plate is removed, it can still tell that that's the camera. So if you can tell, if you could tell it's my car.
Yeah.
If you can still tell it's my car with a license plate removed, then you're not a license plate cam.
So this is, this goes to this story from my office. And actually, I think that's right. We really shouldn't be calling them that anymore, right? That's what they started out as. But the algorithm has grown beyond that. And so not only can they recognize cars, he told me direct quote, "The camera can see anything we can see." So it can recognize anything. Now, they have then turned around and tried to block uses that would be illegal or that they might get in trouble for. And so they've blocked it from searching for particular political bumper sticker terms. I doubt they've thought of every bumper sticker that's ever existed and blocked it. But they've blocked like Trump or Obama or, you know, Harris or whatever. So you can't search for bumper stickers to find people that support those elected officials, right? Or those candidates or whatever. He also told me, again, as if to make me feel better, he's like, well, and I realized, my, I think his attorney and he realized that we should really block searches for naked woman. And I was like, wait, wait a minute. Like, that didn't even occur to me.
How many people drive naked?
I mean, but they're, I don't know.
They're watching, they're watching like-
They have a field of view.
And also, when you're saying, well, we're blocking specific bumper stickers, I mean, if I look at somebody, I used to run like a laptop repair company. I was in the front all the time. And I could tell who somebody voted for based on the stickers that are on their device, even if they don't have the name of it. So like, that's a misnomer when you're saying we're blocking this particular data. It's kind of like when Live View is telling people that you own the data. And I say, whose servers is it stored on? And are we allowed to self-host it? Because if I can't host it on my system and it must be hosted on yours, I do not own this data. You own this data and you can take it away at any time and you can view it at any time. Whatever your internal policies are, I don't care. The fact that that access still exists. So when they say, well, we're taking away the ability to search for this bumper sticker, I mean, there's, there's a million ways for me to figure out that. And that algorithm will learn that.
And it's bizarre for that just to be from his own mind, kind of, you know, like this one guy at this massive company, that tells me that they don't have the right kind of systems in place to be doing that kind of thing more intentionally, more systematically. It's like off the cuff and probably-
It's an afterthoughts reactive to people's-
And they probably blocked that search because some cop did that search.
I mean, given what we've already known that individual police officers have done, like stalking ex-wives, ex-girlfriends, tracking women that have had abortions, it's not hard to believe that.
The thing, humans are just naturally curious. If you give somebody the ability to search for stuff, like just, what is the worst thing that anybody watching this video has Googled or put on Facebook? It, you just, people, I don't trust people. I just don't, I don't trust somebody with access to all of that. It's not even like a distrust of police. I don't have a distrust of police. I have a distrust for humans that have access to that level of surveillance. Have you seen what was going on in Houston where they were entering ASDF and Donut? When you're, because they said, well, these cameras, you have to put a reason for the search. You can't just search without a reason. But you could enter ASDF and Donut. And Donut is, I like donuts, but I don't need to search for, like, what are you, are you searching for me eating a donut? Like, what's the?
Yeah. And Denver's internal policy was that our officers were supposed to enter a case number. Many times that wasn't happening. And all of the other agencies that were searching, very few of them ever enter anything specific.
That was also the case in Austin following their audit.
Right. When you look through the, the logs, you see, you know, law enforcement, crime, suspect. And actually, so one of the other change that is in this new Denver contract that I again, am not wildly impressed by is that now Flock has engineered in this like search box where you have to, you have to choose a reason. So you can still search for whatever, but then you have to choose a reason for the search and it has to be like a type of crime. But that's not tied to anything that's like validating anything. And so just pick a type of crime.
There's just no real enforcement mechanism.
And there's no warrant. There's no probable cause. You might not even have a file, a case file open. So just choose a crime, you know, and type it in there if you really want to do that. And, and I, I would prefer like, again, I think people in law enforcement often feel like they are justified in using the tools at their disposal and they're not as concerned about these things that seem like niceties by comparison. Which is why like in Washington, in that study that just came out yesterday, there was evidence that despite Washington having a law that officers shouldn't be doing ICE's dirty work for it. That's a Washington law, just like it is in Colorado. Many officers in Washington were on this listserv where ICE would say, hey, can someone check Flocks for, Flock for XYZ? And they would go over to Flock and they would check Flock for that plate and they would put something in the search box, you know?
Even just on the individual officer level, we've had multiple stories that come out, just like an individual ICE agent has a buddy that's a cop that just messaged you.
So the idea that that's never gonna happen is just naive, you know, it's just naive.
Somebody in the chat, again, this is something I'd love to verify later. I'm a private investigator and Flock sells Denver LPR data to private out of state surveillance firms.
Will you please contact me, internet person? Sarah@parity@denvergov.org, please. I spoke to one Flock software engineer that was gracious enough to give me some of their time. They were nervous about that, but it was super helpful to me to understand like the power of this algorithm and other things. And again, our contract allows our aggregated data to be sold, right? And do we really understand how it's aggregated, how it's denuded, any of that?
No.
No.
And that's the entire business model, right? Flock does not work if they don't share and sell data. It simply doesn't work. That's the entire appeal of it.
Right. That's exactly-
So that, so the notion that cities can negotiate a really fair contract with adequate safeguards and that really keeps the data local is-
A fool's errand.
A fool's errand, truly.
Yeah. And we would have to have a much different legal system to like plug into. You can't contract your way around the fact that there just aren't, we just do not have systems of accountability for these kind of companies. And if we had really rigorous, you know, all kinds of other legal provisions at local, state, federal level, these companies had to do all kinds of disclosure, they got investigated, maybe then our little contract could kind of tag team onto that. But no, Denver's not gonna write a contract that magically changes this whole data ecosystem. It's not happening.
Yeah.
A lot of people will ask, what are the things that I can actually be do? And I've gotten about 4,000 emails about this in the past month and a half. And I've tried to make a list for different areas. Here's the most, these are the basics that you can do, figure out how to figure out what your city council meetings are, how to figure out if there's Flock cameras in your area.
Yeah.
We're working on putting together a platform right now that monitors over 12,000 different municipal governments. And every time the word Flock, Live View, one of these ALPR comes up, it'll go into a moderation queue that'll then automatically go onto a, then once a moderator approves it, it'll show up on a site. And you can get notifications for something within a certain number of miles of your zip code. Because most people have no idea what's on a city council agenda or even how to attend. But like, what are the things that, while we're in the process of like putting that together, which is probably gonna be a month, what are the things that people can do? Because that's the most common question. Like, what do, I don't, I saw that this was installed in my city. What do I do?
Yeah.
This is across the aisle. Like, this is people in like Vitor, Texas, which like is as right wing as it gets. And these are people in Denver, these people in San Francisco, pretty much across the United States, people, I get this email from people like, what do I do? And I've tried to come up with something, but you know so much more than me about how to get things done here. So I'd love-
Yeah. No, what you're saying is right on. And honestly, we, I guess the good news is that after having signed yet another unilateral, under our threshold extension, the mayor's office, I'm gonna say this tentatively because you never know, but they have to bring this back to council once this one expires. Like, they can't keep doing these little things or they're gonna end up in hot water.
That's gonna be my next question. Can they just like evade it?
Well, in Flock, there's gonna be a limit to how long Flock will go. Well, this is a no cost extension, this most, this latest one.
I think it's a till of March is what I was looking at.
Yeah. Flock's not gonna do no cost like for long, right? So at some point, this is gonna be in front of Denver City Council. And so find out who your council member is. I'm at large. I represent everyone in the city. So I'm a great kind of point of entry. But everybody has two at large members in the district.
Can you explain sort of some of the like legalese, councilsees that some people might not, like what does it mean to pass something by consent? What does it mean to have like a council member at large, et cetera?
Yeah. Yeah. At large just means I represent everyone in the city. So here in Denver, everybody has a member who represents a little smaller district of the city. So whatever district you're in, you have your district member. There's 11 districts. And then there's two of us who are, who are, who are at large. So if you're in Denver, I represent you. So does my colleague Serena Gonzalez Gutierrez. And then you have your district person. So you have three of us. And that's different, you know, some cities, everybody represents the whole place. You can contact all of them. If endowed, email the whole, the whole council. You know, that's fine. You live in, you live in the town, they're voting on stuff. And then the mayor keeps doing this unilaterally. So he should be hearing from folks as well. So it's as simple as sending an email. Like, we read our email. We respond to people. If we get a huge number of emails about one topic, you might get like a response that we've copied and pasted, but we're gonna respond to people. And, and that's one of the amazing things about local government actually is that we're not like congressional offices where they, they just ignore that feedback. We're small and we listen.
I used to work in a capacity where there was Flock usage. There were not nearly enough standardized parameters for searches. It relies heavily on personal integrity without a lot of auditing.
That's so validating. I appreciate whoever said that because I knew nothing about this coming in last February. So-
Yeah. I feel like most council members didn't, right? They're, they're sold like a, a pretty innocent narrative that this is gonna help with auto theft. It seems like a clear one-to-one solution.
Yeah.
You pay for these cameras, they solve your auto theft and maybe some other crimes that the police can utilize Flock to solve. But the, that's sort of what's nefarious about this surveillance technology is that they're betting that if they have the perfect narrative, it's about public safety, it has these safeguards that the people don't know about it, they can install this physical infrastructure. And then the real nefarious stuff like facial surveillance and audio recording and this like super precise camera that details every, every inch of you essentially, that can be turned on with a software update.
Yeah.
That isn't required.
And they reserve the right to do software updates. I mean, that's, you know, again, this contract from the point of view of a lawyer, I just read and was like, this is ridiculous, you know?
Well, that was sort of my, you know, I'm a lawyer. I came into this thinking, of course, city council has access to the contract. Give me the contract. Let me look at it. I had no idea that they were sort of like given this at the very last minute.
And we vote on like 200 contracts some weeks.
Right.
I mean, that's the thing, like the volume of a city this large, like you really, I have amazing staff. And truth be told, it was someone who works in my office, I have four people that work in this office. And she is the one who saw this on the consent agenda and pulled it off. And I mean, that's our system, you know? But if she hadn't been sort of alert, it would have just slipped right through.
I would like to ask, because we spoke to Siegel about this. Some places in Washington and a couple other cities have done this, where they sort of have like contract provisions that third party vendors must adhere to if they collect user data. So like certain retention requirements or certain security requirements or auditing requirements, et cetera. And that's sort of a blanket boilerplate contract that would be attached to anything that a third party vendor. Has Colorado considered anything like that to sort of address?
Denver doesn't have that. I've been starting to think about, I've been thinking about many like municipal level policies that we could put in place that would get us ahead of this instead of behind it. And there's a whole variety of those, but.
Because I'm picturing, you know, if we had, if if across the cities, we had this sort of boilerplate contract, people could themselves go and say, okay, how long is my data being held for? Where is it being held? Who is it being held by, etc? Instead, it's just this giant black box where it's like, we'll, we'll get your cars back and then your data is kind of in the ether, so.
Right, right, yeah, and and people have no, you don't know, right? And that's part of why also that like, we also don't know, we're never gonna know where where a lot of this goes at the end of the day, especially the aggregated data. Like, we have no idea, it's, it's all over. I mean, by now, I'm sure it's been sold and repackaged many times. The other thing that was really shocking in Denver, though, was that we actually were without a contract with Flock and the cameras were on. I almost forgot about this from February to July.
Evanston, Illinois, where they removed the cameras.
And they got rid of them and Austin got rid of them. And what are we doing? We're just secretly meeting with Langley and giving him.
Well, Evanston, they reinstalled them.
They did reinstall them.
Yeah, without the council's permission. And the council had to put black trash bags over these cameras because Flock couldn't tell them exactly why they're up or what they were doing.
I had heard about this reinstallation thing and didn't even have time to like fully.
There's so much.
I'm sitting here like kind of astounded, I don't want to have to go out with trash bags. I feel like that's my job really, but you know.
Hundred five nanometers. So so this is a good question. Are you more worried about having a centralized camera network capturing every possible angle of the city or about the AI technology and search?
It's a good question.
Well, they go ahead and glove, I think more about the AI and search technology because that's what makes it like, if you think about it, if these cameras were just taking a regular old photo of every plate that was going by. And the cameras had no capacity to feed it or the, it wasn't being fed into an algorithm that could read it and make it searchable. Like, that's the part that makes it sort of this like fingertip information where it's so easy then for for police to go ahead and see like where you're moving throughout the city or whatever else. If they had to actually physically look at all these pictures, the pictures aren't worth that much, which is why, you know, more old fashioned policing, like you would have had to. You're not gonna go out and take a picture of every single plate, you're gonna try to figure out which cars you're actually interested in, you know, do the work and then photograph them. And our Fourth Amendment case law is all based in that kind of world. So the massive database of plate photos would not be worth anything without the algorithmic and AI powered. Technology that allows us to read those so easily. I still wouldn't be a fan of it, to be clear, but that's when we used to talk about mass surveillance and get really upset about it in past decades, that's what we were talking about, right? And that seems so like banal now by comparison, it's pretty scary.
Because I, I, there are certain features of ChatGPT I like and I always, my biggest fear is am I ever center using it like the way that I do? So I got a letter from this law from this law firm that wanted to sue me for like for a hundred thousand dollars because I republished the words this gentleman was telling his customers. And I remember just typing, okay, this is the law firm, you're, think about the person who's gonna read my response here. What is the culture of this firm? What is their personality type? And I take it into another chat, it's like, you are gonna take this and reword it so that it is the type of thing that convinces that particular person to think this is a waste of their time and want to settle the case and throw it away. And like, that's what about, I spent three hours just sitting, just going through that. I'm just wondering, okay, like, think of the type of car somebody would drive who was about to do this. What type of, what does a car look like for a person who has this particular personality type? Where do they go on this night? That's what I'm, I'm worried about.
Yeah.
Because I love how useful AI is for these particular things and I've used it in these, I like, I don't use AI with people that I like, I use it with things that I don't want to deal with. Like, somebody wants to do a frivolous slap lawsuit or something like that.
Yeah.
But the idea that that could be used against me with no accountability and stored that way.
Well, and this is what you were saying about the, you were reminding me of like being in college a very long time ago. And it's this theory of like the legibility of a population, you know? And the more legible you are to your government, the more you're just kind of sitting ducks if that goes badly. And and I am a member of government.
AI just supercharges all of that.
And I actually, a lot of times, like wish we had better data to like use it, you know, for good. Like, I'm like, oh, why do, why do people have to apply for benefits on 30 different websites? Why couldn't that just be put together? So there's this constant temptation to sort of aggregate and and I guess luckily, government's been terrible at that for a really long time. Our tech is often really old and behind because we don't have the money and resources of, you know, the private world. But, you know, in a good example of this, actually, that someone was talking to me about recently is that. For the purposes of like Second Amendment rights, and I'm not a big fan of gun violence, but the. The registry for purchases and sales of weapons is kept more or less like on paper. And if people want to track like a weapon that's been bought and sold, they pretty much have to go to each particular point of sale and see, okay, who bought it, who sold it and trace it through in that way. And so you think about, we have that level of protection in that arena. And and then we're just miles away from that.
Yeah.
Right now in Denver for any other thing that, you know, police want to know about.
Yeah, I think the point to emphasize there is that, you know, there's a lot of discussions that happen about, well, what if this very high powered technology were in the right hands, were reined in by the right people? And that's, you know, I mean, it's good, right? I could picture a perfect government that uses this like super accurately and and very effectively. But that's the problem in and of itself is that like. Putting all of that data together with that amount of power in one single source is just asking for a bad actor to come in. I mean, our administration changes every four years, so if you don't like this one, you you may like the other one, but then they may just turn around.
And not only that, but that's the whole premise of the country. I mean, we have like a million, we have all these states so that they can be little co sovereigns. Like, the whole point was, we don't want any kings, we don't want this kind of power. We should know, like in our bones as Americans, that we do not want this much power. Like, we don't want it for these corporations, we don't want it for any level of government, period, full stop.
Yeah.
Like, how have we lost track of that? I just.
I think in part it's because a lot of people just don't know. A lot of the emails that we get are, oh, my God, there's 500 cameras in my city, I got no say in this. And it's part city council members that otherwise might mean well, not understanding.
Yeah.
The capabilities.
And maybe people somewhat trust that like we're paying attention and some, you know, we are, I mean, like, I'm sitting here telling you this. But I would say like, don't take it for granted in any way that anyone in your local government is in fact attuned to this data aggregation stuff that may be happening.
They could just be being lied to in their face.
Absolutely. So, I don't know, I, like I said, I am literally a member of government, I'm doing the best I can over here. And my advice to everybody out there is like, no, don't just trust that, you know, we can assume that government information will be in the right hands for all time. Like, that's not how it is. And a presumption of the opposite is built into all of our systems for a good reason.
I wanted to shift gears a little bit to a solution. So a lot of people in my audience and people who are from Denver are saying, I don't like that my mayor did this thing. You know, they read the links and everything that I wrote about the specific statutes that he broke. How do, like, how do you hold somebody like that accountable? And I had a post that was admittedly naive, just quoting one of my most upvoted comments in the video, where I was like, yeah, you could report him to the district attorney. Somebody said, Louis, the deputy district attorney is his wife, if she handcuffs him, he'll probably enjoy it. And like, it was a funny comment, but the point of the matter is like, what do you do? What are the actionable things that people can do so that when a mayor does something like that? Because I, in New York City in 2012, I got a fine because I did not have two, my license number on my business card, right? And like what he did is a much bigger offense than not having my license number on the business card. And he hasn't been held accountable. So like, what could normal people do that is within the process if they want to see, like, there's be some pushbacks that the current mayor or the next mayor realizes, I probably shouldn't make that type of decision.
Well, there's sort of two layers to the objections that people have to the way this has gone down. One is just, we don't want the mass surveillance, right? And on that, again, just keep, we will get to vote on this. And frankly, council also has a lot of legislative authority. And so now that the mayor has like sort of made his choice and signed at least this next extension and we're stuck with these cameras for another five months. Please be talking to us because there are things that council can do and we, again, we are listening.
If you could say your email again.
Yeah, seriously, Sarah with an H dot P A R A D Y at denbergov.org. You can also really easily get in touch with me by Googling that, you know? And so I think people often, I remember before running for this office, kind of in the time leading up to that, being really focused on kind of the federal government. And even the state government, I spent a lot of time trying to impact things in the state legislature and I was not paying a lot of attention to Denver. And it's such a mistake because so much of what impacts the state a day, not only does it happen here, but it's easy to get heard by us. Like, again, we reply to emails, you know? So that's one thing. And then if the concern is more about the mayor having sort of subverted council in this way. You know, I don't want to express the opinion that he definitely violated the charter. Like, I'm not gonna get into whether at what point leading right up to the line there, you know, is a, no court has ever litigated that. So staying away from that, I agree that the spirit of that is like not right. And the like cliche but true answer is that this is why we have elections, you know? And we're all up for reelection in two years and so, less than two years. So that's, you know, that may feel like a long time to wait, but that is the beauty of not letting us keep our seats for any longer than people want us to.
I'm glad you mentioned the importance of city politics because I think part of our initiative here is to show just how influential city level politics is. Oftentimes, people are focused solely on the federal or the state level where, like you said, they're not super accessible. Your vote is like statistically worth much less.
Totally.
I mean, a lot of council members win by 100 votes, if if not less. And that a lot of cities, especially cities like Denver or Austin or larger cities, the smaller cities sort of in the satellite around there don't follow suit. But they tend to address the same issues if if a large conglomerate of people in one large city bring it up.
Yeah.
And so we've been trying to express like how people get involved and why city politics are so important, not just for the city level before eventual state and federal legislation.
Yeah, and I'll tell people like, it's a weird experience being in local government right now because I feel like the federal level is like almost stopped functioning. And so I'm just sort of like tuned out from that to a degree. I mean, don't worry, I'm like paying attention to figure I need to be, but I'm not really expecting anything to change there other than creation of chaos and, you know? And so we're turning like.
You're not watching Trump's AI tweets about like a plane that's shitting on the protest.
I'm like less attuned to what the federal government is doing than I've ever been in my life as an elected official, which I know is kind of weird. But but it's because like the thing to do right now is like batten down the hatches locally. And one thing that's really energizing is that I do think local governments are starting to talk to each other a lot more because we're just kind of like, we're what we've got, you know? And so it's true, like I, again, I'm fairly new to this game and maybe I won't, who knows how long I'll get to be in it, right? Like, we turn over and that's as it should be. But I'm finally able to kind of like reach out to people in other cities and then the organizations that bring us all together and help talk to all of us, like EFF in this area. So that we can kind of keep each other like informed about what we're learning. And I guess try to like protect people all over the country when we don't really feel like the higher levels of government are that functional, which is just like creepy. But anyway.
Yeah, but it's kind of like a function of American politics, right? That's kind of the, the, the beauty and the downside of American politics is that it is so disjointed by design. At the, at the city level, a district attorney can say, actually, I'm gonna exercise my prosecutorial discretion and not decide to prosecute these certain cases that otherwise would be at the federal level, etc. So I think it's a function of American politics that people should take advantage of.
Yeah, and if we're talking about sort of fascism and how it's starting, I think a lot of federal level elected officials are already really chilled. Like, I think a lot of them are pretty afraid of the government that they're part of and they feel scrutinized by it and they've been threatened by the FBI. I mean, there's prosecutions now against political enemies of Trump, whatever. And some governors and things are starting to seem a little, like they might start to toe the line or get afraid. They kind of haven't gotten to us yet. Like, I don't mean to say that in a glib way because I know that kind of attempts at repression are gonna filter down and down and down. But as of now, your local electeds are still like a little under that radar, I think. And so, you know, keep us honest, right? Like.
What a question. What's stopping city council members legally from commissioning a team to put little black stickers on each of the camera's lenses? Actually curious, that sounds not technically illegal.
Well, we don't have a budget to do that, I don't know.
Would it not be destruction of city property?
It would probably be, well, they're not, the cameras are not a property, it would be destruction of private property, so it would be against a.
Little piece of tape?
Small municipal.
All of the flock cameras here are on private property?
The camera itself is private property, so flock of the physical cameras, which is another interesting thing, we own the data, listen.
I only ask because like, in a lot of cities, there's a mix between private and public infrastructure that these cameras are placed on.
The poll might be public because we have to get those permitted through our neighborhood associations. Another thing people can do is, I hope to find where this is because it was really hard to find, but there's a place way down in the layers of the Department of Transit and Infrastructure website. Where you can see where they're planning on installing new cameras. And so far, I think I'm accurate in saying that every neighborhood that's gotten a permit for a new camera in the last couple of months has turned back around and said, we don't want this camera, we in fact don't want any of these cameras. So if one of them is coming to your neighborhood, that's a chance that the neighborhood sort of organization that's supposed to represent that area gets notified. And neighbors should have a chance to kind of speak up about that too, if there's one of them actually going in. So a number of Denver neighborhoods have said, we don't want these anymore.
What do you feel I failed to mention or that that's important that I haven't brought up about this that you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, such a nice question. I mean, I, it's such a big topic, but I think I do want to also remind people that it's not settled that we even have the Fourth Amendment. That that it's not a violation of all of our Fourth Amendment rights in Denver to be doing this. So, and I mean literally us, I mean, if you drive in Denver, your image has been taken by these cameras. And as you know from your conversation with Councilwoman Siegel and others, it's an unsettled area of case law where the law just hasn't kept up with the technology. These are not akin to plain view searches of like a gumshoe cop going and looking for.
And if I can interject, it's not just unsettled, like there are some cases that have said something about it and maybe haven't addressed it fully, it's just simply a dearth. This is like a lack.
A gap, yeah. Right, and I think, you know, again, this was a part of my practice area for a long time and I, I would have felt very strong about making arguments that, that this. Needs to be looked at differently outside of preexisting doctrine and that it is a Fourth Amendment violation, you know? How does this not violate our privacy rights? If you can be tracked, your movements can be tracked and basically the Denver Police Department has the ability, if they want to, to see your habits and where you go over time and all that. Like, that's really upsetting. I feel that that's a violation of my privacy rights. So the other thing that I wish more people were highlighting as our constituents back to us is, are we not, you know? First of all, that you feel that your rights are being violated. And second of all, that if the city carries on with this, like eventually it is gonna end up in court. And we have paid out a whole lot of verdicts in recent years for police misconduct, so.
I'm reading some of this chat, if I could, before we move on to the next subject.
Go for it.
When you talk about the Fourth Amendment, people have this idea that there's sort of zero expectation of privacy in public spaces. Can you explain sort of like what a reasonable expectation of privacy means and what the Fourth Amendment actually covers?
Yeah, or you can, but yeah, a reasonable expectation of privacy. I mean, the, the classic Fourth Amendment doctrine says that exactly what folks are saying in the chat, you're completely right, that if you're in public and and something is in plain view, then you don't have an expectation of privacy. But I do have to ask, like, do you have an expectation that all of your movements are being compiled that are in public? Like, that's the difference.
Reasonable is the key term there, right? A reasonable expectation of privacy.
And and I did not expect that, you know? And then there's this other weird thing where in some strange ways, the more we all get used to surveillance and technology, the more we can no longer, like that Fourth Amendment doctrine is sort of flawed. Because the more we just sort of like know that we're being watched, the less we can argue that we had an expectation of privacy. That's kind of messed up, like, I don't know that that was really the, you know, framers intent there or whatever. But tho- those old legal frameworks just don't fit very well with aggregation and tracking of this nature and the kind of insights that AI can produce. That, again, a set of human eyes cannot, you know?
You didn't have the cameras back then, you didn't have cars or trains, you had a horse without the buggies.
Seriously.
But I, it's interesting, I visited the UAE and I went to the Middle East for a week three years ago. And there, the law is different where you don't, there is an expectation of privacy to some extent in a public place. So if somebody takes a picture of me and I say, you can't, don't do that, and he takes another picture of me, you can have that person arrested. So they're very serious about it. And if you have a business, you can have a camera that's like located, that's, you know, right a little outside of your store. But if you have a camera that's like, let's say my business where I can kind of get what's going on a little across the street, they'll tell you, turn that, you can't do that.
Oh.
So here, we haven't, there is no expectation of privacy in a public space, but it's very hard to figure out where do you draw that line and how do you draw legally?
I'm glad you brought that up because the other thing we've gotten zero answers from about Flock despite asking is, there are also all these private flock cameras throughout the city that are owned by big box stores, HOAs, whoever, you know? And they, we know that they can, and I don't know how often do, feed their data up to DPD as well. And so you may have, I mean, I don't know how many of them there are, I don't know where they are. And because they're being installed by just private people or or businesses that are buying them, I have to imagine that they're often installed in ways that are in fact capturing like inside their neighbors' windows and things like that.
Of course.
Which is not in public, you know? I mean, this is a mess, like, and I have no answers about that part of this whole network either.
Yeah, like, I don't, I can't tell private businesses necessarily, you can't have this in your own parking lot. But where I've really tried to coalesce people around is paying millions of dollars to be watched when you're on the street. And that's been something that's like, there are some, there's a couple of comments, I forget the gentleman who made it, but he's like, yes, like, you know, like, I'm Republican, I agree with Democrats 100% on this issue completely. Like, they don't want to be watched everywhere they go all the time.
It's really not partisan in any way.
It's not, it's not a hard sell.
It's very easy to walk up to somebody and say, yeah, instead of spending $2 million to have you be watched by an AI camera in a park, like, what if they had a park ranger or a policeman there? I mean, like, because the, like, where I lived, if they had cameras, I mean, I have text going back to my landlord, they would, like, they would look at the camera, they would smile, they would take their little angle grinder, take the bike and leave. Whereas it doesn't, even if people think that the cops are not necessarily gonna do the best job of it, I guarantee it's gonna do better than Bonsi Buddy on a telephone pole, like infinitely better.
And a great example of that, like something that we're not growing at all in Denver, even though we created it, we have one of these programs now where if someone's really having like a mental health crisis or a behavioral health crisis or is in the throes of, like, they're using a drug. And that, and they really need some kind of medical response, we have a team now that will go and do that so that our police officers don't have to go and do that, which is like not their job. And we just, we're not growing that program, it's been the same size for years. Everything shows that it's way cheaper for us as taxpayers to have that kind of response compared to a police response overall, just because of the level of tech and training and everything that officers have to have to do the full scope of their jobs.
I can imagine the office, the officer is probably less excited to go out to somebody.
Yeah, I've never spoken to a cop who is not a big fan of that program and getting those calls off of their list, you know, so they can do other things, right? Which is just like common sense. And so that is a concrete example of that program. If we use the, literally the money for the flock contract that we voted down, we could add like one or two more full teams to that program, for example. So, I mean, they're real dollars and we don't have a lot of them, we just had huge budget cuts. So I like, that's a good point.
Yeah, like when it comes to money, the half a million dollars that is spent on that could be spent on somebody instead of like watching the person like being cracked out in the street. You could send somebody to help the person cracked out on the street. And even if you don't like the idea that your $500,000 is being spent, it's much cheaper to do it this way.
At the local level, this is also real money, like we do not have a huge budget, so, yeah.
Thank you so much for taking the time and answering all my questions, I really appreciate it, for sure people watching really do, thank you.
Thanks.
I know you're very, very busy, I could tell, and thank you for letting me clock you up for your office for an hour. Hit End Stream?